I just wanted to make them aware. And also ask Chief Briggs if he would be willing to have one of his officers deliver these notices. They've all been sent certified letters, but just again to make them aware of the upcoming date on June 10th.
If you wanted any, you'd like to have an in-hand service?
Yes, please.
So, have we received the return receipts that they have received the notice?
One of them that came back unclaimed, but he came into the office and I hand-delivered it to him.
Okay.
And I know he is aware, because I know the chief spoke to him. The other two have been signed for.
Yes, I did speak with this gentleman and I spoke to these two.
But, yep. I just wanna, again, just cover all bases, make sure they're all aware, so that we don't have any issues.
Okay.
Okay? Could you just ask the board to make?
Yeah, I will.
Yeah.
That's it. Just wanted to let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we, do we, do we need Dawn to go down and talk to these people if they've signed for them?
Which is that one Tammy just gave you?
What's that?
Talk about these?
Yeah.
So what I did, there was originally eight or nine of them, I believe. So I made contact with all of them and took care of most of them. So what I can do, um, so this property is, these properties are going to be, uh, deeded.
Twenty-fifth is the date that, uh...
June 10th, right? The last day is June 10th at 4:00 PM. That's what I can do. If you want, I'll make contact with them again and see if I can take care of it.
I guess the question to the board is, do we, do we think that's necessar- that's why I asked Tammy if everybody had, if they got their back to return receipts, that they actually received them.
It's Kevin. He's on his way.
Do you think it's necessary, or does the board want?
Well, I think what that does, that...
Gives them a little initiative.
That gives them the initiative, that frees up, uh, I mean, I don't think we're in the, the business of taking property for, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, that's certainly not our preference.
So I mean, you get every effort to, to pay up on the taxes, is my opinion.
Okay. So is the board comfortable with having Dawn reach out to these people?
That's fine.
If he's willing to do it. Thank you. All right.
He'll be here in a minute.
Do we have, can I see that green one on? Is that the appointment papers in there?
Yep, in the orange one. We should have two people for Elizabeth. Mello and Adam will pop out and talk with them.
Okay, we got one here for Ellie.
There's a note from Ellen. She wanted to know if you would, um, appoint her without her coming in.
Okay. We got Adam in the, uh, Command Center. Elizabeth?
Yes.
Come on up, uh, that'd be great. Okay, we were in receipt of, um, your request to be an alternate member on the Conservation Commission.
That's correct.
Uh, just recently, we've, uh, so that we had the opportunity to meet and, cause I, uh, meet the people who are applying as just, as opposed to just signing off on these things. A lot of times, we don't even know the applicants. Um, so we've adopted the policy to have people come in and meet with us and tell us why they want to be on the commission and what they think they can bring to it. Um, so, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself, where you live, how long you've been in town, where your background is, and what your interest is in serving on this committee?
I moved to Kingston in August of 98, and I live off of New Boston Road. I have a bachelor's degree in environmental conservation, and with a minor in sustainable horticulture, and a master's in environmental ed- education, so I have a strong background in outreach and education, and also in conservation. So, I have a lot to learn regarding the committee, and that's why I want to start out as an alternate. There is an opening for a committee member, but I'm not ready for that at this time.
Does anybody have any questions? Rich is a newly, uh, appointed representative to the Conservation Commission. In the, in the past, we haven't had a dedicated member, um, but now he fills that position. So, if, if the board appoints you, you'll most likely be seeing him at, uh, at the meetings.
He saw me last meeting.
Do you, um, uh, you, you, you feel comfortable that you'll be able to attend most meetings?
That's the plan, yes.
And you, you, you got time to participate in some of the, the things they do, um...
Yes, I've met with Abby and we've gone over quite a few things, what she needs for assistance and that I'd be able to help her.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Elizabeth?
Yep. I'll apologize for coming a few minutes late, but I appreciate you putting your name in the hat and offering to serve on the commission. It tends to be thankless jobs and most commissions and boards in towns are always looking for volunteers, so I really appreciate you doing what you're doing. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to, um, appoint Elizabeth Mello to the Conservation Commission.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? All right. Posed, abstentions? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now I go downstairs at some point, make arrangements to do the oath?
Yep, they're signing the appointment form, and it'll be with Tammy starting, you know, I'll bring it down tomorrow morning. And so anytime you come in, you can stop and chill.
Or if you want, you probably could take it down right now.
Yeah.
If you want, she's still here.
If you want to just wait for us to sign off on it?
Sure.
It's Phil and Kevin. Most things with a new house.
Getting there. Moving stuff.
I heard you liked the new heaters.
Yeah, I'm fighting with them. But storage is empty, the trailer's leaving.
Nice.
So, number two, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thanks, have a good night. You want to, uh, have Adam come out?
Sure.
Adam, you want to come out and address the board?
Don't get the duck.
Okay. Debbie put the arm on you, huh?
No, no, certainly not. Well, according to this letter.
He has agreed to join. Why, for the benefit of the viewers, why don't you just introduce yourself? Uh, you're here, you're asking to be appointed as an alternate member to the Heritage Commission.
Uh, Adam Faulkner, I've lived in town practically my entire life. I don't remember when I got here, sometime in 86, as I recall. Um, mostly I was asked, um, there were some questions about websites, Facebook in particular, uh, and if I can say this well. Sounding full of myself, uh, I was asked if I could help out, like, with maintaining the commission's Facebook presence, and I agreed of my own free will and without any coercion. I enjoy heritage on principle, history, always, all great stuff, uh, so I'm happy to help out.
Anybody got any questions? We're very familiar with Adam since he, he helps out with the cable. He, he's kind of like the, uh, the guy behind the scenes. We thank you for that. Anybody got any questions for Adam?
No, I appreciate, I believe you're doing the recording and sound for the presentation for the Kingston Days. I appreciate that.
Thank you for volunteering.
Yeah, no trouble.
But, I want a motion.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor of appointing Adam Faulkner to the Heritage Commission, alternate member, to expire on March 31st, 2020, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, abstentions? Welcome aboard.
Thank you. I'm just going to pop back into my booth, and I'll take care of that tomorrow.
Don't jump out of there too quick, your head might hit them.
Okay. Let me see. Ellie, uh, I guess Ellie Olicio, who was a library trustee, I think her term had expired?
I think so, I'm not sure.
And she didn't run again?
Right.
Um...
I had a conversation with Ellen Faulkner, because what happened was Ellie's term was up and she knew she was on the school board, she was going for the school board, so she didn't do this. Um, and then they had her resignation, um, so there was an opening, so Ellie agreed to fill in just for the year, because she knows what's going on over there and everything else. And, to be honest, I think we all know Ellie and would always like to see her at any of our meetings. Um, I think we could, um, I would ask that we don't have to bring her in specially for this, because it is just an appointment to the, to fill in a vacancy.
Okay, is that a motion?
I am making that as a motion. We appoint her and dispel the, having her come in, and we all know her dedication.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor of appointing Ellie Olicio to the position of library trustee for a term to expire March 2020, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, abstentions? Did I miss something?
No.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That was all of them, right?
Yep.
Okay. Next, next on the agenda at 7:15, which we're one minute early, is the Heritage Commission to discuss an archaeological study on the, that was conducted on the recreation land located on Main Street. Come on up.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Powers, um, from the Heritage Commission. Uh, been in here a few times. As you know, we, um, kind of made a big deal for the past, uh, couple of months about, uh, some information we found on the, uh, recreation land, where, uh, there was, um, some activity going on to enhance the, uh, the, the area with, um, basketball courts, et cetera. So before that happened, as you know, we, um, got some information. We had it verified by several, um, archaeologists and by the state archaeologists that this was a high sensitivity area and that they felt that they could, um, before we removed the stumps, um, of the trees, that they should be able, they should look and see if there's anything, um, that pertained to Native American, uh, even pre-contact. We were very excited about it. Um, the selectmen, um, agreed, um, that we could proceed with this. I think you all have a copy of the report, um, which, uh, found out that they did not find anything, that there's nothing there. Bad news as far as our history go, goes, good news as far as the Recreation Department can do what they want per this report with that land. Um, I'm also trying to put a good thought on this whole process, um, that, you know, we have now, anytime anybody wants to go for federal money for anything up there, it's clear. We've also, as a certified local government, um, and a member of a lot of, um, organizations, have again proven Kingston is interested in their heritage and their history and are willing to put out some money to do so. I think, I'm hoping that this helps us in the future with grants. We will cer- certainly include this in. So, I know that, um, we're all interested in the total tally of what this came out of the Heritage Fund from this. Um, we initially thought Phase 1 and 1A and 1B would be $5,031. It came out to be $4,367. As promised, Dr. Goodby, the archaeologist we hired, when they did many test pits and they weren't finding things, they stopped the process. So, um, again, you know, I appreciate that you supported us in this. I'm, you know, of course, not happy in a lot of ways that we didn't find anything. We had a lot of information that said we should, but we didn't. Um, and I just wanted to come and face you, um, with the report and let you know, um, the same thing you know from reading the report, that Recreation Department is free to continue their projects, pulling the stumps or whatever.
Okay, thank you for that. Does anybody have any questions?
What I would say is, I wouldn't say that you made a big deal of it. I would say that the Heritage Commission did their, did their service by investigating it, and, and the Select Board supported you in doing the due diligence to see if there was anything there. So I appreciate everything that the Historic District does do. I understand you have the best interests of the history and preservation of Kingston, and I truly do feel they're in good hands with you as a chair.
Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And we will be getting shortly $500 into the Heritage Fund from our raffle, just so that you know that. I had a couple of other items, um, if there's no more questions on this that I'd like to run through.
Can I just, can we do a quick update for the people from the Rec Department who are here?
Absolutely.
Dawn?
Sure. About the equipment?
Yeah, is it Friday? So, we're planning on pulling the stumps end of the week, beginning of next week is the plan, and so construction is going to be moving forward based on this information, so.
I, I have a question on that. Um, the stumps are obviously ones coming down. Are they done taking?
Okay, hold on one second, Scott. Why don't you come on up to the mic so that the people at home will be able to hear you and will, will recognize you under public comment. Go ahead.
Scott Hallow. Um, I live on Wadley Point, and I'm also volunteer on the Rec Department. So the stumps coming out is great. Obviously, you can see what's there for stumps. There's a few trees that are left that they can't put the fence in that was discussed because they didn't go far enough with the trees. So I, I'm curious, are they not going to go as far with the fence now on Wadley Point? Or are they still going to take those other trees?
When I spoke with Rich last, um, he asked me to help acquire a larger excavator to get those stumps out as soon as possible.
Yep.
So they could move forward, and so, uh, we made some calls, uh, last week, and, um, a gracious individual that has a business in the area is going to send one of his large excavators over at no charge to the town and pull all the stumps.
Which is big.
So I would assume at this time they're done cutting, based upon what Rich told me. Um, seeing he wants all the stumps pulled ASAP. I can only assume that. I didn't ask if he's going to be cutting more trees.
You, you're under the assumption that the, you wouldn't be able to put a fence in that area?
It doesn't go to, it doesn't go to the back property line. If you look where they stopped cutting, it stops about where the lean-to is, but the back fence is about another 50, 75 feet back, where there's still two or three more significant impound trees. Actually, the fence that's there is attached to one of those trees. So unless they're going to move in about 10 feet from the current line, which wouldn't make sense, the fence will not continue to the back line like we had talked about in the beginning.
Do all of those trees have metal in them?
I do not know. I would assume...
Maybe that's why they didn't cut them. Maybe they're just going to knock them over with the excavator.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I would assume they do, just from the looks of the rest of them, that they already cut. You can see where they sprayed with metal.
Yeah, I know a lot of them had metal in them. So maybe, maybe they're going to just knock them over.
I would think Rich is well aware what the Rec Department wants to do there and his plan for it, whether he didn't have the equipment at the time or whatever. I wouldn't worry too much about that. I know Rich is, it's, he wants to get it done.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
I just wanted to, uh, let you know that this Saturday, we're having one of the top 10 free events in New Hampshire, and that is a, um, at the Plain Cemetery. We're getting a presentation and walkthrough at the cemetery at 1:00. We have advertised that throughout, um, the state and throughout the town. We have asked, um, Brad Maxwell to get the Plain Cemetery in order. We have, um, worked with, um, the, um, setting up parking with Rich to set up parking on the plains. We will be using the Town Hall and the Fire Department for restrooms. Um, the, um, Mr. Bartlett gave us permission for handicapped people to park on his property, which is adjacent to the, uh, the Sexton's building, building there. We've, um, notified the neighbors that there's going to be a big event there. We got some tents and some, uh, through the 325th, some, uh, drinks and, uh, little snacks for afterwards to have conversation. So, uh, it's really, Ernie has been advertising this through, you know, quite well, so we expect to have a very good turnout for it. It'll be a really great program. Uh, we're trying to also get the, working with the museum committee to have a videotape for our archives. So it starts at 1:00, and probably the presentation will be about an hour lo- um, long. It should be really, um, exciting. So I think we don't really need much from the town. I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that it was going on and that there'd be some bustling around, and that we would be using the Town Hall. If it rains, we'll have the after-conversation here, but we do need to have the handicapped bathrooms access, um, and regular bathrooms. So we will have someone monitoring the Town Hall and having the bathrooms open. I believe we discussed this all before. I'm just bringing it up again. So, that's really exciting, and then, um, after that, um, we have, on July 27th and August 4th, we're doing the, um, a play here. Um, and with that, I would like to ask two things. One is, um, we have gotten access, um, done the Recreation, um, the request to get the, on the day of the play, to have access to the Town Hall. Uh, so we're going to need the day before to come in and start setting stuff up and cleaning off behind the stage.
Tom is on the stage.
Okay, that was what we were going to ask, if someone from the town could get some of the paint stuff.
He's working on it.
What we did is, we did do a walkthrough, and stuff that's really big, we're going to, I'm sure he probably knows, slide to the side and just use some kind of cloth or, or drapery so that it's not...
And what's the date on it?
There's two dates, July 27th, which is a Saturday, and August 4th, which is a Sunday.
Okay, because we have another request. Kingston Summer Theater, it's 7:26 and 8:02.
For rehearsing?
Play for the Kingston Days.
Yeah, I think this is rehearsals for that same...
Ah, that must be the rehearsals, okay.
Okay.
That will be the hearse, um, and, um...
This Carol?
Carol Minzen-Hausser. I said that wrong. So it should be fun, and that will be videoed, um, and it should be a good time. And then, that's it. Um, I think the other thing is that, and I know you brought it up, about opening the bandstand, perhaps some discussion, um, amongst yourselves, whatever you decide, but we would like to see the bandstand maybe open through Kingston Days and figure out how people can use it. We've had some interest in having bands there, and we're not sure about the fee schedule, how you want to work that. So I believe, you know, Richard, uh, was going to bring it up at some point, um, but it would be nice to have it open a little bit. Like, we were kind of, wanted it open Memorial Day weekend, you know, because that's kind of, um, because of the parade on Monday, it would have been nice. So, I guess we need some advice on how to have people access. It's not really in my jurisdiction, but we're the ones who get the questions about it. So, um, and I think, um, that's all I had.
Anybody got any questions for Deb? Thanks for coming in to update us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take this opportunity to open up to, uh, public comments. While we still have public here? No? No takers? Okay. Uh, we do have a application which Deb spoke about. It's the Kingston Summer Theater Group. Looking to use the Town Hall. It's been reviewed by Rich, Bill, and Dawn. The dates are 7:26 and 8:02. 1:00 to 3:00 PM and 6:00 to 8:00 PM on both days. It's a play for the Kingston Days, 325th Celebration.
Make a motion to approve the use of the Town Hall stage, um, for the summer theater program.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Posed, abstentions?
Abstain.
One abstention. Okay, we have a, uh, veteran's exemption. It's been reviewed, a eligible. This is, uh, why are you getting the jump on the, uh, it's a request for a reservation, uh, for the Southern New Hampshire Trail Blazers, uh, in conjunction with the Kingston Police Department for the Community Center. That's, uh, the Rec Center?
Yes.
December 7th, 2019, for snowmobile safety class. Nope, all left, so I guess we can't ask.
But no one signed it.
Yeah, I just got it today, so I didn't know. You want me to hold on to it and get all, everybody on board? They do it every year.
Um, I, I think we could probably take care of it. It's been there, was it there last year?
Oh, yeah. It's been there for many, many years. Well, moved down there.
Right, it was here at the Town Hall for a number of years.
Was here for years, yeah.
I, I wouldn't be opposed to approving it, provided that there's no conflict.
Yeah, I did talk to, um, Paul, and he said that date is fine.
And it's, and it's been held there in the past. Any discussion on it? Any concerns about it? I want a motion to approve the Southern New Hampshire Trail Blazer Snowmobile Safety Class on December 7th, 2019, at the Rec Center from 6:30 AM to 6:30 PM.
One question. Do we charge for that?
I don't believe we do, since it's in conjunction with the Kingston Police Department. Does anybody want to second the motion?
Second.
Who's the motion?
To approve the, uh, facility use on that date, provided there's no other conflict.
And we had a motion?
I, I made the motion.
Oh, you did?
And, uh...
I seconded it.
Richard seconded it. Uh, Phil seconded it. He thirded it. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
One abstention, all abstain.
Three abstain, two abstentions. Okay. Okay. We have...
I was waiting for that.
This is, uh, this is kind of a housekeeping project, um... This is, the town has generated a tax bill to itself. Is that my understanding?
Yeah, due to the way it was, um, changed in the system. Yeah, due to the way it was, um, changed in the system, even though it belonged to the town, a tax bill was generated, so we need to.
Okay, you need to obey that.
Yes, and then we'll go to the proper person after.
Okay, and this was six cottonwood circle, a, some common land that was taxed inappropriately to the tune of seventeen dollars and ninety cents.
Yeah, it wasn't removed when it was supposed to.
So this is a housekeeping. This was to redeem that parcel, right?
Um, yes, is that the deed?
It is.
Yep. If you agree to the, you know, we received all the money except for a minor amount due to.
Except for the fifteen dollars?
So if you're okay with that, then it'll be get back.
Okay.
Surprising. It's a good success story, I guess, but.
That was a long time coming, but it was a positive outcome.
Right. I'd say we lucked out on that one. Hopefully don't repeat sins of the past.
Mm-hmm. Okay, we have on the agenda here, uh, the approval on the revised health officer job description.
Ooh, didn't get there. It's taking out the, um, it was, used to be line eleven about beauty parlors and tattoo parlors or whatever it said.
Electrolysis.
Electrolysis. And I, if you look online, state does regulate those. You can look them up online to check them, so.
Make, make motion to approve the updated job description for the health officer?
Second.
Any discussion? You all set?
Well, there's an item to be discussed in a non-public session that I think might actually tie back into this.
You wanna hold off the motion?
Yeah, if we can postpone that for the time being, I would appreciate it.
I'm gonna draw my motion.
Who made the second?
I did.
And we're drawn?
Yep.
Okay.
But what I would ask is seeing we did start with this one, I think we should at least take a look at the others and make sure they're updated properly. I don't know if I do them one at a time or not, or.
Job descriptions?
Yeah, for at least town hall employees.
Okay.
Okay. Update on House Bill three sixty-five, expansion of the solar net metering, information from solar power financial discussion.
I had a couple of questions. One, we did get a letter from Glenn Kaufman, uh, and a single source, which I think if you read that, that's what we're doing for the library. There's a big difference from having a, a solar company come, a conglomerate to put small house panels. This one is a little above, it's not the same. And even if you read the letter that he gave as an example, it's exactly what we're doing with the library with revision energy. I wouldn't be opposed to making a phone call to revision to see if it's something they could entertain before we do that. But the other thing is seeing that we do have two different contracts, one a letter of intent and the other a lease agreement. I would think it would be in this, um, board's best interest that we send it for risk and legal review before doing anything further with it to see what they come up with. And my only other question, I'd be concerned, does this board have the authority to enter into a twenty-plus year lease? Or is that something that has to go before the voters?
I, I would say that we, we should get an opinion on that. So what is the update? Did the bill pass?
It, it did. It's sitting on the governor's desk, um, but it, it passed with a veto-proof majority. So it's a question whether he's gonna sign it or not. They don't expect him to veto it. It's a question if he's gonna sign or not. If he doesn't sign it, it goes into effect without his signature.
Okay.
That's for tomorrow, I think.
Yeah. I, I would think it would behoove us to send it anyways for legal and risk review.
Do you, uh, are, are you talking about the submittal from that one particular company?
Correct.
Do you, do you think it would be, uh, advisable to maybe, uh, send out a, a request for proposals?
Absolutely. I think at a minimum, we need three proposals in front of us before we can make an educated decision about it. I also think, I agree with Kevin though, that, you know, we should, the, the length of time on that, certainly we need to know, 'cause anybody is gonna want a substantial amount of time commitment in the contract. And I don't think we have the authority to do anything beyond three years with an option for renewal.
Okay, well, we, we'd have to get an opinion on that.
Right. And I, so I, I think we should proceed with getting a legal opinion on that, but also solicit at a minimum two other bids, if not more.
Was it set at the, uh, so the bill, did it, did it go through at, what was it, the five megawatt?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Up to five megawatts.
Right.
Okay.
How do you wanna solicit the bids? Do you want to go ahead and do that?
That's my question if there's, um.
I had one other company that contacted, contacted us. I don't know if it's the same exact thing, but.
Well, should we not?
But if we, we do a little.
Let's do the legal opinion first, 'cause if we can't, if we can't enter into an agreement legally.
Well, I, I would think.
Well, without a meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I was about to say is whether we just put it to the voters to enter into it or.
Right.
You know, and I, honestly, for that length of time, I would prefer to put it before the people.
Sure.
So why would we put it out to bid if we don't know if we have the authority to do that?
Well, there, there may be different proposals. I mean, that, that is a basic land lease they're talking about. Um, you, you may have other, other proposals, um, that wanna to, uh.
And put it on the wire?
Pay you a percentage of what it generates or, or, um, you know, there, there could be a number of different ways that the town could receive compensation.
I, 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 looking at what this gentleman proposed to us, the letter of intent seemed benign enough and it could be canceled anytime. I think we should do a due diligence, see if anyone else, like I said, at the very least, call revision to see if it's something that they could do. I believe they said it's odd that it's scoped that big of a project.
Uh, no, he was fairly interested in it.
But I, I would at least check with them and then see where else we could go. I would like to put it on the ballot for next year, but I would think we could do the RFP process still and sign a letter of intent and it would be based on if the voters approve it. 'Cause the letter, and, and we could find a legal opinion. I think we could still move vote. We don't have to wait till, um, March to do anything. I think we could go out and do everything.
I think if we're signing a letter of intent while we're seeking other bids, that's kind of acting in bad faith, because the letter of intent is to let them know that, hey, we're planning on signing with you. And if we're.
No, I'm saying we could go out to bid and if we find whoever has the best bid.
Right.
I think we could do a letter of intent based on waiting on the vote in March. I'm not saying sign a letter of intent now. I'm saying after the RFP process.
Maybe we can task Susan with, um, looking into some, um, solar projects down, because obviously probably not in New Hampshire because the, this bill's just being passed now. But down in Massachusetts, I know there's a number of municipalities that actually have fairly large fields and see what companies, um, they use that maybe reaching.
There's actually a lot in New Hampshire that's looking to do stuff now too.
Reaching out to those companies that, that have, have, uh, you know, large fields down in Massachusetts.
In your spare time.
And maybe we could send that out.
Okay.
But I think, I think we could do the RFP process and still move along, but I would like to see if it does, at the very least, a phone call to someone there to find out if we can enter or, actually, I don't think we have to. I think, um, D R A should be able to tell us, right?
Whether it needs to go.
If it has to go before the voters?
I can ask.
I think we could get an answer for them, right?
Yeah, I, I would guess that it probably does, given the, what the library. I would guess that that was the reason the library put that on to, uh.
Yeah.
Question is the voters, if they could enter.
I mean, you're changing the use of that land. You're changing the use of a piece of town-owned property. You're entering into an agreement for over twenty-five years. I, I don't really, I'm not in favor of doing it any other way other than putting it before the voters. I mean, I don't know that we need to waste any time getting an opinion on it. It's.
Well, I, I think, I think it'd be worthwhile getting the opinion on, on whether or not we could move along without ratification of the town vote. At least that way we know how to approach it and how to negotiate with the people and, you know, there's a big difference if the board could make the decision as opposed to, you know, having to have it ratified via town vote as far as negotiating with companies. You know, 'cause they. Does that sound reasonable?
Well, I think we can get the opinion and then decide whether we wanna, you know, use it or not.
And I, well, if, 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 if the opinion is, yes, you can only do it through town vote, then it's not optional.
We can do it, but we could still set it to town vote. The other way around.
That's the second time I heard that this week, get a legal opinion and don't take it, but.
I would say not take it.
What I would ask is at the very least, if Susan does contact this gentleman and say, we are still interested in him, but we feel we do have to go out to RFP process, um, in hopes he can deal with us.
I wonder if, um, well, I guess we can reach out to someone. I don't, I was just trying to remember what, I think it was Donalhu, Taka, Chindala that gave an opinion on the one the library was looking at.
I think so, yeah.
And I, I don't recall, after reading that, I don't recall if it had, uh, if it had to be town vote or not.
I have that file downstairs. I can look at that too.
Okay.
And would Susan, would you be able to contact revision?
Yes. Just to see if they would do that size project.
Yeah, if that's something they'd be interested in bidding on.
Okay. Well, that brings us to, uh, seven forty-five with Mr. Broderick on the surface water testing results at Country Pond.
Yeah. Okay. For those out there who don't know me, Peter Broderick, Health Officer, Connor, Kingston. Um, I believe you have in your packet a couple of letters, Department of Environmental Services.
I don't know if I, I people's.
I, I know I gave you.
I think there was from the, there was a.
It really notification, and if you notice this here, this notice is not intended to alarm anyone, so it's really just information. Yeah, I just need copies for my file.
Okay, was it the, was it the map?
No, no, that's different. I'll, I'll be talking about that in a second.
Okay.
Can I ask you when you got those letters?
Thursday.
Okay, in the future, could you get them to this?
I get you. She had, she had them. I Xeroxed copies for her. Uh, I don't know why they're not in your packet, but, you know, she, she had them. Okay, so, um. Okay, so that concerns the Audi and Gau- uh, Audi and Goss?
Artarian Goss.
Right, up on one twenty-five. There's P F O As that were found there and has leached into Country Pond. Now, if you read the letters, you'll see, don't be alarmed, it says right on the letter. On Saturday morning, I went to the Country Pond Association meeting down at the library. They had the, um, EPA, name was Jim Brown from EPA, and Michael Summerline from, uh, New Hampshire Environmental Services. And that's the presentation that you have in front of you, Mark. Now, after the meeting, I mean, they gave a lot of information. I have some notes here, but afterwards I spoke with them and they'll be more than happy to, and this is really why I'm here, more than happy to give the same presentation or a similar presentation to the board of selectmen. So I just wanna know if that's something you're interested in and then I'll give them a call.
How was the, um, Country Pond meeting attended?
Lot of people.
'Cause I know they advertised quite a bit.
Yeah, yeah, there, there were, there were a lot of people. But they had, it was also their regular meeting, so, you know. But anyway, so the question I have, and the reason I'm here, Susan could've done it, but I didn't know. You seem to have put that on my desk. I didn't want it to be, you know, Susan to me, to Susan to you, to Susan to me. So I figured I'd come in and go right to you.
I'd recommend, I'd recommend we, uh, ask Mr. Brown to come in and give a presentation.
Right.
I think that's how we left it when he came in last time.
And I'd say we should also notify everyone, put it on the, on the bulletin board and everything else, that anyone interested in attending.
They do want a couple of weeks because there's some more data they talked about there that they, they should have in a couple of weeks. Now, the board only meets every other week. Then we're running up against July fourth, so I will contact them tomorrow and have them come in, you know, as soon as possible.
So everybody's got this letter from.
Mr. Brown, right? In their package?
Those letters are, again, you could read one, you read any other. One is to property owners and one is to public water. So we're, we're both, so we got, I got one on Thursday, one on Friday.
No, I, uh, what I'm, what I'm referring to is, well, how about, does anybody have any objections if we read this letter?
None.
No.
Okay, it, it's from Jim Brown from the EPA. Country Pond P F A S sampling data and annual Country Pond Association meeting. I have received the results for the surface water samples collected in Country Pond and some brooks discharging to Country Pond. I'm working with an EPA risk assessor to evaluate the data. At the moment, it looks like all the surface water sampling results are well below any levels that would be a concern to swimmers or waders in Country Pond. We are still waiting for the results from the private drinking water samples and additional groundwater monitoring well samples. I'll let you know when the data is available and we can schedule a meeting with the selectmen to discuss the results. So I, I guess I would propose that let's let him get ahold of us once he receives the data and then we set up a meeting for him to come in and present it to us.
That's the data I was talking about. They said probably a couple of weeks.
Does that sound reasonable?
Sure.
Okay. Well, that's good news on the, uh, as far as the surface water goes.
Now, as a postscript, I understand EPA will be turning this over to the, uh, federal EPA will be turning it over to our environmental town, the state. Right? And I believe last Thursday, the state filed, uh, action against some of the chemical companies. I don't know the list of who they were, but I believe that was done Thursday or Friday. I think it was Thursday. So the state's involved in, in that also.
So the state is still gonna take it over even though they're not gonna leave in the federal government's hands?
Well, I think they have to.
They, they say about thirty days, but as you know, this site's been going on for, well, it, it started in nineteen fifty and then the pollution ended in nineteen eighty when the company went out.
I, I get that, but this is new information, new contaminant.
Yes, you know, um, you know, uh, apparently they feel it's at levels that the EPA doesn't need to be involved in, but I'm sure that's a question you'll be asking them, you know.
Well, I got the opinion that, I mean, when the state was here, that they were up against the deadline, that it became their burden.
Yeah, it didn't, didn't seem like they have any options.
Right, it seems like, yeah, okay. I guess we'll end up with this.
My concern is that the APA is gonna put it on the state. And just like what happened with the P F O As in this area, the state said they'll do the initial and they pay. and they paid for all the filtration systems.
Put it on the town.
But the last one was on the town's ticket, you know, so I'm concerned that this is gonna, so we probably want to stay in the loop with all of this. But anyway, so I, I'll get in touch with them and have them call me, you know, tell them, yes, we'd like one, or Susan can, whichever, Susan's probably rather have me do it, and that's fine, I have no problem with that. And the way I understood it, you kind of put that on my desk anyway, so that's okay with me, you know. But I just want to make sure you're okay.
All right, so let's wait, wait till he gets the information on the...
Yeah, I'll give them a call probably tomorrow, and, uh, we'll set something up. I will tell you, it'll probably be, I'm on vacation the twentieth to the twenty-seventh, and then we jump up against the Fourth of July, so it's probably going to be five, six weeks, only because they don't have the data, and then we're up against Fourth of July anyway. And we meet every two, or you guys meet every two weeks now during the summer, so, but I will let you know, um, as soon as they know anything, I'll notify Chief Briggs, who can, and Susan, and they can let you all know.
Okay.
I'm happy if you're happy.
Anything else for Pete? What's that? Thanks for coming in.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, new business.
Can I ask something on old business?
Sure.
Um, we did get the ruling from the DRA that the tax impact statements or numbers would have to go before the voters?
Yes, we did last time.
Yeah, that's what it states, it, it has to go before the voters if we're going to put that. So I would ask, to say, just to get it off our agenda, is that this something the selectmen are willing to put in as a selectman's article, or do we want to contact the person and tell them to put it in as petition warrant article?
I, I guess, I guess my feeling would be, in, in the past, it has been changed through a petition warrant article, and, and I think there is an advantage to that, showing the voters that there is at least a percentage of the population that is, that is putting some work into this, because they feel strongly about it.
And I also feel, you know, even if it's a petition warrant article, we can express our support through it, you know, in Decision Day and say, you know, the selectmen...
We're going to either have to give a recommendation or not recommend.
Right, so, you know, I'm in favor of the petition.
I have no problem either way, I mean, basically, I talked to the groups I'd go to, and they were all in favor of it.
Yeah, I, personally, I would like to see a selectmen, but we could show our support on that way, so, split the bath, water the chief brig.
I'll say selectmen article, so you have to break it.
I'll, I'll say we support it at the, um, town meeting.
Do you want a petition warrant article, or you want it to be a selectman's article?
It doesn't matter to me, either way, either way, we're going to support it.
All right, I got a coin here.
Yeah, I, I mean, I feel like we're going to support it.
We're going to support it either way.
Why not make it a selectman article? I think it makes it look like we're not trying to hide anything in ballot.
I would, I would agree with that, I would agree with you.
So I'll make a motion that we put in an article, a warrant article next year, for the tax impact statements.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor of the selectmen putting in the article, as, as opposed to a petition warrant article, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Thank you.
Okay.
And someone should contact her to let her know that...
I, I can contact her, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll contact her.
Uh, new business, sale of surplus equipment, Don has some info.
I, uh, have been working on that equipment down there, getting titles together and what have you. I'd recommend that we, we do so many pieces of equipment or vehicles at one time, and post them in two newspapers, and have them come in under sealed bids, and have the board make a decision on how they're going to award them.
Okay, have we, I know we've auctioned them in the past, is that, are you not recommending that now, or we don't have that avenue available?
Right now, we don't, and we would have to pay a certain percentage.
In the past, we haven't had to, right?
We haven't had to, it's been free for the last thirty years.
And that's not available anymore?
I don't believe it is, no.
Okay.
Do we have the list of equipment?
I do, so what I can do is quite a bit, so we'd break it down into probably three different, uh, groups of equipment, and we would post them, um, at three different locations, at two locations, three different times.
You don't think you'd get more money if you did it smaller groups, or is it just...
That's what I mean, smaller groups.
Okay.
So three small groups of...
I don't know how many pieces of equipment you're talking about.
I can't tell you off the top.
Is the highway department, do they have anything?
They do, highway, I think Bill may have some stuff as well.
The fire department?
Yes.
How about if we send out a request to all department heads to submit a list of surplus equipment that they would like to dispose of? So we can kind of take a look at the list and, and then, you know, decide, along with their recommendation of, of, you know, possible grouping.
So I would suggest we do three different groups, three different times, and put it in two, at least two newspapers.
So you're saying divide the equipment into three groups, not group it into three groups? So they don't have to bid on, they can bid on individual stuff?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Wouldn't we just do one big bid process, where, I mean, sealed bid?
It may make it easier to do it the other way, but we can do it that way.
Well, it's easier one bid, but you probably won't get as much revenue.
Right.
No, I'm just saying to buy the whole lot, I'm saying, but anyone could bid on anything.
But I'm still waiting for some titles, that's the problem.
I want to see how much stuff we have inside.
Yep.
Okay, so...
Because of the timeliness of it, I don't have all of the titles.
Okay.
So that's why I'm suggesting we do one group, and I'm still trying to acquire titles.
Okay, so how about we do this, how about if we get a list of, the, I don't think the other department has, have that issue.
They don't.
Okay, and then, how about if we just get a list from you of what you have available now?
Yes.
And then we'll address the other ones in the, in the future.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Do you, uh, want me to give you an update on, uh, the property off Cardinal that we talked about?
On the what?
The property off Cardinal. With the, uh, building, the, the garage is partially on the town property.
Sure.
So I spoke with...
That's not on here, right?
No, but just an update.
Yep.
The property owner did hire, um, a surveyor, and he's going to come back with some additional information within the next two to three weeks, which I'll bring forward to the board.
Okay, the, the town hall, I guess the town clerk is closing her office on July fifth?
Correct.
And the question is, what does the board want to do about the the remainder of the town hall, as far as being open or closed?
I think it'd be okay to close it and allow the employees to use any earned time they have.
Okay, so it'd be an unpaid day?
Just so nobody has to be the only one sitting here.
What's that?
Yeah, that way, you know, we don't end up with one person sitting here, so, yeah, it's fine to use.
Use a vacation day, or...
Whatever.
What?
What if somebody doesn't want it off, the majority does, you're forcing that person to use?
They can stay.
Yes, they can stay. And allowing them to go home and use earned time.
So if Tori wants to come in?
Tori can come in.
She can come in, okay.
I, I don't know, but I, I think you either decide to open it, or you decide to close it. You can't, we can't have one employee here.
I think everyone was in favor of having it closed, but do you want me to ask the question before you decide? Since you put it that way.
Sure, I, I mean, I, I don't think it's a good idea to have one employee here, build it by themselves. Um, so, I, I guess we, why don't we move forward with, it's going to be closed, uh, with, and you can utilize, it's either unpaid, or, or vacation, or earned time, and let's see if we get any, uh, resistance to that. If we do, you can certainly bring it to our attention. Committee liaison reports.
Um, you weren't here the week before, and I know, um, Rich had a conversation about, um, what transpired at, at his Parrot's meeting, and, you know, there's just going back and forth with Rich Sainte-Lair, and we thought it would be good to add this as an agenda item, this way, if any, we all have liaisons, so if anyone had anything to bring forward, this would be the time to update the board. So that's why you're seeing that there.
Okay, do we have any?
I think all of mine have come out already tonight, except for the fact that, um, they were inquiring about use of the bandstand and what, what the charge was going to be for non-residents or residents. Said the selectmen had worked on that, like, the end of last summer, they couldn't remember exactly when, and they never heard a verdict.
Say that again, for...
Like, if, if somebody wants to use the bandstand to get married in it, what's the fee going to be? Is it free for residents?
We're going to look at, um, redoing the fee, town fees.
Well, that's, that's what I mean, the whole, the whole fee schedule.
That's on that agenda item.
When do, when is the conservation meeting again?
They just, uh, they just met, so we were asked to...
Wait, conservation's Thursday, I've got so many meetings, I can't keep up with them. So they asked us to look at a firing range that was in, they were shooting across, actually, one of the trails, so, um, us and Paris went out with one of the members.
It's on town property?
They're shooting across town property. Across town property.
Okay.
So we went out, we took a look at it, we agreed, it's a safety hazard. And we spoke to the, uh, person that has the range, they're going to modify the range, so it's no longer an issue. They were shooting across where it was on a corner, on a trail, up off Rock, up off Ball Road. So the issue's been resolved, if you could tell her that we've addressed it with the property owner, and he's going to be changing that.
They, they were firing from their property, across the towns, back onto their property?
Yes. So that issue has been resolved.
Wear an orange hat when you're walking the trails.
If you could pass that along, that would be helpful.
I will.
Thank you.
Um, the only thing I, the budget committee hasn't met, but, um, I see the building committee is here, I know they had concerns about, um, what transpired last week. And I'm sure they're here to talk about it later.
Okay, that's probably a non-public discussion, or? Okay. Any other liaison updates?
Um, in your packet, there's, um, the resident questioning, so Rich is the...
Is this thirty-four New Boston Row?
No.
Okay.
This is, uh, twenty-one Madison Ave.
Okay.
So Rich went out, and I went out and looked at it, and for the past year and a half, two years, Rich has been not issuing driveway permits unless the aprons were installed properly, and basically following the ordinance, and so this person had a problem with that. Um, so at tomorrow's planning board meeting, I will let them know, you know, why that was done. The resident was saying, well, a bunch of my neighbors have done it in the past five years, and I think the large majority of those were illegal driving.
Without permits?
Yeah, without permits, so, um, him and I spoke about, I believe it's Dairy or London Dairy that has a bond requirement for any paving company within the town to do driveways, has to have a twenty-five-hundred-dollar bond, so if anybody puts a drive, and they only have to do it once, but there's a list of approved vendors who can put driveways in. So it cuts down on, and basically, those guys, if they don't pull a permit, they lose that bond.
Oh, it's for the, for the paver, not the homeowner?
Yeah, not the homeowner, it's just, if there's any paver who wants to do work in the town of Kingston on a driveway or anything like that, they have to have a bond set up here, and...
Well, how do you, how do you monitor that?
So, him and I are looking into how the other towns, towns do that, but if you're driving around and you see someone paving, and, or if you find someone put a driveway in without a permit, it's not the, the homeowner that loses the money, it's the paver, so, and they, I guess it's...
No, that's probably the guys doing the driveways without a permit don't have a bond anyways, right?
Well, if they don't have a bond...
They're not supposed to be doing the job.
Can't do any...
And therefore, they don't get a permit.
Correct. So, we're digging into it further, but as I understand it, the planning board is the ultimate authority on the driveway permit, so I'll be bringing that to them with that information, but just a heads up on that.
I can't even get a paver to call me back.
I don't know if this is the time to talk about that, but I know this, it's on the agenda, but I've had some, some calls or concerns on that whole thing, especially Madison Ave in general, because someone else, um, went to put in a permit, and they're like, oh, if you drive down the road, everyone's at the gang, and it's conflicting stories, because the post office, I believe the reason we have the ordinance is because it mirrors the federal standards. The post office is saying they're not going to pull over five feet off the road, and the post office is telling people, you know, on, we're to traffic hazards such as one-eleven, yes, they want it five feet off the road, so their people can, but on Madison Ave, the post office is kind of saying, well, no, I wouldn't do that, we won't drive over there.
It's not five feet, it's just an apron that gets the post away from the road, because as it sits right now, if someone puts a mailbox in illegally, and the town hits it, the town is not liable for replacing it. If someone puts it in with a permit and does it properly, the town is liable for it, so...
But the, the order says by...
There's two different standards.
Well, no, there, the federal standard is exactly what's mirrored in our ordinance. If, if the post office is telling people that, then they're violating their own standard, so...
It used to be different, maybe it's changed.
I mean, the whole intent with this driveway permit thing was to pull ourselves into line with the USPS standard.
I, I know what you call them for Richard, because every winter, whatever, you know, if the plows take it out, people call and complain, but the ordinance does say five feet away, and, but I can tell you, Drive Madison, they are all not even one foot off the road, they are like at the edge of the pavement, and the people, like, this individual and this two other people that want to pave, it's a difference of, they're quoted five feet times fifteen feet as an apron, that the paving company is charging to, to make it that way, which is a substantial difference, considering, in, as this lady states, the development was in eighty-eight, you know, um, why isn't it grandfather, how, you know, it's a substantial cost.
If, if you read the ordinance, to repave, you need to get a permit.
Yep.
Even if you're doing it as existing, and the reason that, so he has been holding this...
Her, her old driveway's grandfather, her new one is not.
If you want to re, yeah, if you wanted to just seal it, just put sealing on it, or whatever, then you wouldn't have to...
If you want to replace it, then you, you'll have to adhere to the current standards.
And so, just so everyone's aware, the reason that Rich, he has been, before he issues driveway permits, has been making people adhere to the standard, so...
So, as far as the grandfather, and that's when you don't make any changes.
Correct. Well, you cannot repave without a driveway permit, and if you pull a driveway permit, you have to adhere to the current standard. Just as you would have to if you pulled a building permit, you would have to bring it into, you know, up to go...
I, I guess, what's the, what's the enforcement action? So I pull a driveway permit, I pay my twenty-five dollars, um, Rich comes out and says, oh, you have to move this mailbox, you know, and I say, I'm not gonna, and Rich says, well, I'm not going to issue you a permit, he still calls the paving company, pays ten thousand dollars, has the driveway put in.
Well, and that's exactly why we're looking at this, this bond thing with the paving companies. It's because the paving companies help them, they don't go in, you know, if someone wants to go get hot mix and, you know, whatever, do it themselves, great, good on them, but...
It's the same thing if somebody builds something without a permit, it's, I mean, it's an enforcement thing.
Yeah.
I mean, if he told me I had to move my mailbox five feet off the land, off the road, it would be in the drainage that they put in for my neighborhood, I, I couldn't move it five feet.
And that's why he comes... And that's why he comes out and looks and tries to find the best fit for the situation. You know, there are obviously non-conforming lots and houses in this town that, you know, common sense has to be applied to.
What I would guess too, what I would ask is, is it possible to leave the people an option if they can move their mailbox, but it doesn't have to be paved, they can throw stone down? Why, does it, I mean, is it a point where it has to be paved, as long as, you know, it's not mud enough?
That's what the ordinance says, though.
Does the ordinance say that? The ordinance just says, all of it, I believe the ordinance says, the mailbox has to be five feet off the road.
It's gotta be paved.
It specifies the apron size and materials, so. But I'll follow up at the post office to make sure that they're, I mean, see what they're telling people, 'cause we don't need them working against us.
I agree, and I know someone that did a bid on it, had someone come out and bid, there was one certain company that specifically said, you have to go pull a permit, and, you know, they were very concerned about not pulling a permit, and, I mean, they're a very reputable company. And then someone else came and was kinda like, eh, you don't have to worry about that, and that's the problem that I know Rich has run into, but it's pretty sad when you have companies that, you know, don't care.
Right, and that, you know, the intent, the bond thing is to address that, so, I mean, it's up to the planning board to take action on that, but I'm gonna be presenting that to them, just so everybody knows what's going on there.
Okay, so how do you wanna perceive this, as far as letting her know that she needs to adhere to the existing ordinance?
Well, it's not really the board's purview to know anything about it.
What, do you wanna pass that on to Ellen since she reached out to her?
I was tasked by the planning board to address this.
Okay.
And so, I'll be, like I said, I'll be bringing it up to them tomorrow.
Okay, so they're gonna be responding to this lady?
We will, yes.
Okay, we'll open it up to public comment. Any public comment? No, okay, how about a motion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the public and non-public minutes of May twentieth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, abstentions. Um, correspondence, applications, we got purchase orders.
I believe they're all signed.
Yeah, the one for two dollars and nineteen cents for aspirin. Didn't we have something that was gonna address this?
I did have a conversation with Cindy a couple of weeks ago, she was still revising a policy and was gonna get it to us, but yeah.
Okay, we got a note in here from Ernie Landry, asking permission to have Adam help with the microphone placement for the heritage play, was that something you were interested in doing, Adam?
Yep, we discussed it, just because they are going to be paying their, I mean, for that, we need permission for you guys to do that.
Oh, I thought it was a volunteer thing, especially since you are now a member of the Heritage Commission. That's not under the job description? Oh, I see, okay. Does anybody have any objection to that? We addressed the driveway. What was the, I didn't see that.
I didn't see that either.
DOT permit.
What's that? Oh, it's probably in correspondence. Another folder, yeah, it's in there. It's just kind of a form, they're informing you.
A different form now?
It's just, they had, it's for a state road, and they're doing a permit, so they're letting us know.
SFC is applying for a appeal. We got a backup plumbing inspector application.
We had someone else that we interviewed for it, too.
This guy is plumbing, but not gas, I think.
No, he's a gas.
Is it the other way around?
Yeah. Which kinda doesn't help us.
So this was a letter from Kerry Locke, the Hampshire DOT driveway permit application. For your review, information review. Okay, this is for a driveway entrance on Exeter Road, one-eleven, Exeter Road. It's a new lot. For Mike Mitchell.
So that's for the lot to be built, we're taking a lot off the farm.
On the farm, they're cutting out a piece for the farm?
Yeah. I saw that at the-
Site distance is good.
Historical group. It's on the, that end of the farms property, towards Little League Field.
Right, site distance is good.
Yeah, that's an issue.
Uh, do, what do you wanna do with this? You wanna pass it on to the planning board? Because they must be subdividing that lot?
Yes, I would guess so.
That's what they're doing.
I think that's-
Planning board sent it to the historical to look at.
Yes, it's on the agenda for-
Okay, you wanna just let them know that there's a, that they've applied for a permit from the state, 'cause that's one-eleven?
For driveway.
Okay. Waste Management donated some, it must be for Kingston Days, a number of containers for Kingston Days donated by Waste Management.
It's nice, though.
It looks like, one, two, three, four, five. Looks like three trash dumpsters, six yadas, two six-yard recycling dumpsters, and two thirty-yard roll-offs at the fire station. We didn't discuss, we had a complaint by Maureen Silvers of thirty-four New Boston Road with concerns about roadwork being done on crosser property lines. I guess this is something we'd have to check with Rich. This is the one neighbor that doesn't want the road paved on, what is it, Symes, Symes Road?
Symes and Circuit.
Symes and Circuit. And it says, roadwork being done crosses property lines, losing property every time work is done, removal of berry bushes and phycia bushes due to being ripped out. Neighbors using property as a drive around from Circuit Drive to Symes Road, physical barriers have been removed, a wall. On June second, I placed a large boulder wall on the corner of my property, on June third, I woke to find the wall missing. There are tire tracks on the Symes roadside of house to the wall, you can tell the tire tracks are different due to the weight of the wall. So it sounds like, did that get, that got reported to the Kingston Police Department?
It did.
And was it investigated?
It is still under investigation.
Still under investigation. Are you gonna be talking to Rich at all?
Yeah.
Or are you communicating, since you're the liaison?
Yeah, I've been in contact with-
I assume we're not down there removing the bushes, are we? Maybe you could just ask the highway guys, let them know that we had this complaint, and I assume it's not us removing the bushes?
Unless the boulder wall was placed in the row or-
Not the wall, the bushes.
Yeah, I mean, they're not, no.
We're not doing any work down there?
No, they haven't done anything down there.
Okay. So we're, that's, it's under investigation, the Kingston Police. Okay. Play rehearsal, we got the veterans exemption, common sheets from planning board on table.
All of these here. I put them by.
Oh, those on plans, okay, we can take a look at those. Is anybody available to attend the ZBA hearing on the rehearing?
I plan on being there.
I am gonna try and be there.
There was a motion of the Hawk Ridge, there's a couple correspondence from our attorney. Okay, I think everything else is probably non-public.
Could I just ask if you were of any change on bad start, what's happening with survey?
I haven't heard from Dennis. Dennis was still working on it, so I can make a call to him tomorrow.
If you don't mind following up with Dennis, just let me know, I know the resident down there is concerned, and appreciate it.
Anything else before we go into non-public session, Adam?
I just think last meeting, there were some questions asked about other kind of streaming services, I got the answers for that, I don't know if you want to do that now, or-
Sure, come on up and enlighten us.
So I just, I talked to Chief Briggs briefly about one of them. I checked Danville, I checked Exeter, I checked, who else did I check? I think Fremont, Plastow, and Epping. Nobody, as far as I can tell, uses their own, like, so there are a few different ways to do streaming. No one does, hosts the videos on their own sites, they all use, some use Vbit, which is a service, electronics offers for about two thousand dollars a year, that's why we didn't use them when we had electronics. One of the, Danville uses Town Hall Streaming, which I couldn't find a yearly price for them, but I found an article quoting the gentleman who runs it, saying it's two hundred and fifty dollars a month. So it looks like every other town that I, that was mentioned, the services they're all using are paid services, whereas we're using YouTube, which we can do for free, so I just wanted to get back to you guys on that, so we would have that information.
Well, I guess, how does it, I believe that YouTube all comes down to, however you put it in there, the difference on the pay and, you know, I question what the different prices are, but the difference is, you could go and click on a set, you can go, everything's there. YouTube, what am I gonna search, Kingston Selectance Meeting?
Yes, okay, I wasn't sure, so, there is a way we could do it, where if you were, if we were so inclined, we, previously, you had directed that we didn't want tab hop links to the videos on the town site. We could put links to the YouTube video, so you could just go to, say-
Go to our webpage, get the link to the meeting.
You could either have a link to the meeting, or if we wanted, I could just embed it, so you didn't even have to go to YouTube, it would just be there. It had just been, I think it was last year, you had all voted that we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna do that until we had some of the kinks worked out. So that's all that is, we can-
Last year was told we couldn't do it because of the equipment, what I would think is, we'd wanna at least have it for transparency, I don't know how everyone else feels, but transparency, I should be able to click on five-twenty Selectance Meeting, and wherever, however there's a link that brings me to it.
I mean, I, again, I can, I don't wanna say absolutely, I'm like ninety-nine percent sure, because I do know, Susan can back me up, at the last election, we were directed to put the fire department's presentation for their new fire station, and we did have a hot link for that, an embed, so you could just, from the town website, you could just play the video right from there. We can do that, it's, we could do links, we could do embed, we could do whatever you'd like. It was just, one, we had decided not to do that last I heard, but again, change your mind, that's perfectly doable, we can do that, no problem. And two, I just don't know, again, this is up to you, right now, per instructions, when a new meeting becomes available, I delete the old one, I don't know if we wanna keep doing that, I don't know if we wanna have an archive going, that's, again, up to you.
That's what I think, you'd wanna have that archive, I don't think you wanna delete it, because then it, you don't have it.
Well, couldn't we, couldn't we just do our own page on YouTube?
Oh, we have our, yeah, so-
We do have our own page?
We have our own account on YouTube, if you go there, it is accessible, it's not well-accessible because of how YouTube works, I can't do a custom URL like YouTube Town of Kingston, until I have a certain number of subscribers on that channel, and I just don't have that yet. But we could have a link from the town website, right to that, right to the channel, and it would have a list of whatever videos you direct me, or, I say me, whoever's-
Take available?
To keep on that site, we can, we can keep things there forever, there's no, no reason we ever have to get rid of anything, I was just, that was the instruction I'd been given.
I don't think we wanna delete stuff, I would, I would think the voters would wanna go back to last year's deliberative session and check something if they wanted to check something.
That, I, I acted your discretion, so just, whatever you all would like to do, I can, I can keep doing what I'm doing, I can change what I'm doing.
Let's, let's look into it a little bit more.
I just, I just wanted to give you that heads up.
Probably better to have a direct link from our page to bring us somewhere, I would think.
Sure.
Makes it easier for the person researching it.
Yeah.
They go on the town website, and they look, okay, Selectance Meeting of such and such.
Yeah.
Tap onto it and go, right? That's usually the easiest way.
Yep.
I find that when I go on YouTube, that sometimes it's a little bit difficult.
It is, yes, it is because of just how YouTube works and how their search algorithm works. It can be a little tricky to find us, but yeah, again, we can have just a link to the channel, so people can see all the videos. If we want, I can actually break them down, so Selectance Meetings have our-
So what benefit is there to spending two thousand dollars a year?
If, my opinion, no benefit, it's really not any different in the end, because it's just, you're still going to a different site. Again, if the concern is just having, I would like to click this link and go right to this video, we can do that without spending any more money. It would take a little bit of time in doing, because we'd have to kinda finagle the website we have a little bit, but it's completely, completely doable.
How about, you look into it a little bit?
Sure, yeah, we wanna make it as user-friendly as possible, I think.
I just want, again, you, you had asked me to look into that, and I just wanted to, to pass that information along, and-
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
I would say, if we're looking for a backup, I would think we'd want the person to be both gas and plumbing certified.
I would think so.
Right, wouldn't, wouldn't-
I would think so, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, does that mean Robert can serve as a backup right now?
Right, because I don't think that serves us any, right, only having a piece to what we need.
It's just gas, right?
Right.
Okay. Anything else? All right, that'll conclude the televised portion of our meeting, and we'll be going into non-public to discuss a number of legal issues. Thank you for watching, have a good night. Motion to go into non-public for legal issues, personnel issues.